Okay, we ready to go?
Yep.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. If you have not signed in at the back, if you please sign in in the back for us so that we'll know who was visiting with us or who was conducting business with us. If you've never been here before, let me explain how we operate. I will call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lectern, give us the meat of the request, and there will probably be discussions or questions among board members and staff. Once we have heard from staff, I will ask if there are any persons here that wish to address the board on behalf of the request, either the applicant or someone who may be representing the applicant. If you wish to talk with us, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you would like for us to take under consideration for the case. If there are multiple people here in support, we would like to know that you are here. However, if you... If what you want to bring to the board has already been brought to the board by a prior person, please don't come back and get us with it again. One time is sufficient usually. Once we have heard from the pro side, and I will ask if there are any questions or anyone here in opposition. If there's here... If there's anyone here in opposition or has questions about what is being requested, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you would like for us to take under advisement. Again, if there are multiple people here in opposition, please give us the meat of their opposition in one presentation. If you feel like something has not been brought to our attention, please come to the lectern, give us that information. Once we have heard from both sides and had discussions, normally there is a decision made today. However, that we do have in our bylaws, we can postpone until the next regularly scheduled meeting should there be questions unanswered or parties need to talk or something going on. But normally, we do have it all happening here. The first case that we'll call is VAR 2014-14. Bill Simon on behalf of Evelyn Walker and Pam Ringo's, 3472 Beamer Road, Val Austin. You have the show.
Good afternoon, everyone. All right, our first request is a variance to the county's corridor road overlay requirement. In your packet, there's a survey plaque of the property, and the property in question is the property that's identified as track number two, which is a 2.16 acre tract. Advocate is in the final stages of redeveloping and facilitating the property subdivision. The board recalled a few months ago, or about a year ago, there was a variance request for the property that's on the corner, which is the Flash Foods property. Sub property is the remnant of that property, and they are just finalizing dividing the property up. The relief piece requesting today is a relief to our lots. With the fact that properties that are located within the Beamer's Road corridor overlay district require lots to be a minimum of 250 feet. And the applicant is proposing a lot that has about 209 feet of range, so they're pretty close. Staff's opinion, this lot meets the intent and purpose of the overlay road requirements, and staff has recommended approval to this request. This property is the vacant Mokomah Sales Lot. It's been there for years. I think it's the home of Dale Hodges' Mokomah Sales Lot. And again, staff's opinion, the lot was close enough towards the width and meeting the corridor road overlay requirement. So that is recommended approval citing criteria D.
And once we do this, the other two remaining parcels will be sufficient for distribution to the heirs or whatever?
I'm not sure if they're going to sell the property, but the other two lots do meet our minimum requirements for size, dimension, and speed of that area.
Okay. Any questions, any discussions from the board at this time?
I have a question. This is a county case?
Yes.
And this is a piece of the county that's almost completely encircled by the city? Not really, but almost. So my question is, should this be annexed by the city? Does it meet the city's requirements for whatever it is that we have net overlay, something?
There's no overlay district there in terms of the city development standards. They're available block on frontage with center of 60 feet.
Okay.
And the property is such, now it doesn't, it's not contiguous with city limits?
For city limits, you'd have it all the way down into Frontal Road to get to the nearest city in the boundary or east to Port Melton or down.
Yeah, it's not that far.
Not too far, but it's... Right, it...
Just a question.
I think within a decade or two, we might get city limits out there, but maybe three.
All the city limits goes away, I mean, it's real past that.
Yeah, there's, I don't know, there's all of it against road.
Well, we can't make a...
Wait a decade to make a city.
Just a question.
Okay, any other questions, any other discussions? Is there anyone here in support? Stine, would you like to give us any information, or are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied with that. I just wanted to let y'all know. One thing is we did this because there were six tracts to land on in this one tract, and they're individual tax records on each one of them. There's also multiple owners on those six tracts. Even though it's one plaque, you got multiple owners on one tract, multiple owners on another tract. We're trying to solve a problem, is what we're trying to do. And we divided the corridor west uses. We got the bubble home part in one lot, Rock Cody on the park and lot deal, and then in the basement lot, and that's basically what we're trying to do. Thanks.
Do you anticipate having to divide any of this up in any way in the future?
No, that's...
This is it?
That's it.
Okay.
All right.
Any other, any questions from Mr. Stine, any discussion? Is anyone else here in support? Is anyone here in opposition, or does anyone have a question about what is being requested?
I have a question.
Please come to the lectern, give me your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Juanita Morgan. My address is 6001 North Over Street Extension. And the property in question, there's a liquor store there and a vacant lot, and then my house backs up to that vacant lot, and it's the only house to the next street, which is private place. It's the only house, like I said, on that block, and it's all backed up to my property. Is it in any way going to affect my property? Is anything going to be built in there nearby in that little vacant?
Ma'am, we cannot answer will something be built and if so, when or what. Probably at some point in the future, it will be developed, but when that time comes, they will meet, have to meet all design standards and setbacks and everything else to do it. Otherwise, they will have to come back to this board and ask for a variance for whatever it might be that they're requesting, at which point you would be notified what would be... Or that there was going to be a meeting to discuss a change in use of that land or something. But right now, unless Mr. Stine has got something else, right now, do you...
Nothing on the board.
So is this considered commercial or something?
Yes, it is all considered commercial up to your backyard or sidewalk.
Sidewalk. At some point in time, mine could become commercial.
At some point in the future, you might could request, if you for some reason wanted to sell it to somebody, they want to put a professional office or something like that in it, you could go to the zoning board and make a request to have it rezoned. But you, it would be residential until someone requests it.
Just getting so close to all the commercial in there and still in the county and with that terrible water system. Y'all won't take us into the city and, you know, we just can't get...
Well, we don't have anything to do with that. That's up to your county commissioners and city council people.
But the main thing is that I was wondering, since I am that one house there...
Right now, no foreseeable change. All right, is anyone else here in opposition or possibly has a question about what being requested? Was there any response to your office, Carmella, that we need to be aware of? Okay, any other questions, any other discussions, ladies and gentlemen? Did we get a motion on this request?
Make a motion that the variance be granted citing criteria D.
I have motion from Ms. Gastons to cite, going to recommend approval as presented citing criteria D.
I second.
I have second from Ms. Alvarado, all in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck with it, hope everything works out.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next case is city case, application 2014-11. Gray Murles, enter 3277, enter Frontal Road, Val Austin.
Yes, sir, I would do all six here so I can work the gadget. Basically, I'm here today and our clicker mechanism, I think, has flown through.
Your gadget doesn't gadget?
Yes, gadgeting somewhere else.
Okay.
All right, this is a variance request for certain provisions in the LDR that govern the width and right of way developments. As you see in the map in your packet, it's zoomed in version on the screen. This is probably located along the west side of it, the road. The borders in Frontier and also Lake Lori Drive. More specifically, it is the vacant area that is between the Woodnickel Cove and Heritage Bank. There's an existing road that wanders through there, sort of an L-shaped pathway. It has been there for several years, and it's a private driveway currently. The owner of the property, now that certain parcels are being sold off, it's time to sort of look at the bigger picture, actually create a roadway of some kind so that each parcel will have access and frontage on a road. The question is whether it becomes a public road or a private road, and they are requesting a private road, but also requesting that it have a reduced right-of-way width. Normally, a local street in a commercial development, the road width is a right-of-way, which is retired to 60 feet. They're requesting the equivalent of a 50-foot road, not all of it as right-of-way, some of it as access easement, but 35 feet of it as actual right-of-way on the east-west segment. In your packet, there's a series of other maps. California, there's actually one here. This is sort of a conceptual sketch of your proposed master plan. It's the east-west segment road that is the main one in question. You see the hard line, which is actually the right-of-way boundary line, and then it's centered within an access easement. The easement itself would be 50 feet wide. And if you look over toward the Woodnickel side of it, there, there's a major right-of-way, it's only not an access easement. The city is not so concerned about that because the only whole purpose that that segment on the end serves is to keep them from having to put in a cul-de-sac at the end of this east-west road. It functions much the same way as the access easement that is right here next to Heritage Bank. Here, the property line runs down the center of the driveway of the road, and so these parcels going up to the middle. Here, you already have an established pattern where the property line for Woodnickel is on the edge of this road, and rather than put all of this path or this access onto that lot, we want to just make it private right-of-way that's under by property owners associations. They all have equal access to it, and those are the under discussed parcels. It's a complicated puzzle that has evolved over time. It has not evolved very well. We can roll back the hands of time. All of this ideally would have been master planned and designed in the beginning. So what we've run into is a situation, we have a visible road on the ground that doesn't ideally match existing property lines. If you look at the details of this drawing, you also see water sear easements across the portions of the property. Those are also no longer ideally situated. So we're trying to basically put a Band-Aid on the overall design and come up with a scenario that actually makes this thing work in both presently and in the future of its time. Some of you may recall a similar type of variance we looked at four years ago with the Drury Development out of the exit 18, where they were proposing a private road, right-of-way that went up into their commercial development with their reduction in right-of-way width. They were requesting 35 feet, and they got them to squeeze in with sidewalk on one side, lands sticking outside and so forth. And it seemed to work all right for Drury, but that was part of a large package of variances. All of it had to be signage, but the signage is not as part of it. Here, it's a little bit different. The land is more situated differently. It's not wedged there between creek and interstate. It's more conventional, partial area. Along this part of the property, they provided Heritage Bank. The property is in your packet, they had started with a 40-foot wide road path and an easement straddling on the side of it. And so staff's recommendation is for approval, but basically it's going to this pattern westward for this road, and then leave this, this as private right-of-way. So with that, we're recommending approval of the two conditions in your packet. The first one is that the east-west segment of the private road should include a minimum right-of-way width of 40 feet and be centered within a 50-foot wide private access easement. In other words, it's worth proposing just make it 40 feet, and that interior right-of-way is the 35 feet that the pattern ever started. And then number two, the north-south connecting segment in Frontier, which is on Woodnickel, should include a minimum right-of-way width of 35 feet, which will be shared access for all the other properties. In other words, it's just a shared access right-of-way that takes the form of a private right-of-way, not a requirement that you reserve a 50-foot wide path through there for it. It's sort of in between what is already done over by Heritage Bank and the east-west road. Although it's awkward in that it introduces a third type of alternative, but it actually fits the road that's currently there next to Woodnickel or the property that's already located.
And utilities in there are private?
That becomes an imaginary puzzle going forward in the future. If you look at the easements, they essentially follow that east-west road halfway through the property and then sort of take angles and turn off. They are there, pipes are in the ground. Development of these lots has to work around them. But the whole idea is to not get the road too far removed from these utilities and just keep the easement, utility easements, basically lined up as best we can. They're part of the puzzle too.
Well, the part of the reasonable question is if somewhere along there it ends up being on private property instead of in the easement?
They'll have to do a separate easement. And that already exists now with the Heritage Bank parcel. Those utilities were put in before the bank was built. What's interesting, if you look at the aerial, this part of the aerial, which you can kind of see it here. This road originally just went straight through on the way forward. When Heritage Bank came along, they physically rebuilt this part of the road and then the road around, and they built a bank side. Now, the water sewer was already in place, it's still in place. It's in easements across this part of that property, and that's shown on your placard as well. So they, I think that started giving the attention that, hey, this whole area needs to be looked at long-term. And that's where we are now. What's triggering it is like this aerial on the screen. They use such a property toward the restaurant. But it's come for all the discussion of is there needs to be a gap between them and Woodnickel where this private road goes through. And so the question is, how big a gap is that to be? How does that affect and relate to the rest of the development? So that triggered the master plan drawing, which is in your packet, to look at the big picture and a decision to be made about that, but...
And everything else on the plaque is up to code and meets all the city requirements?
Yes. Everything's got access, but, you know, the requirement is that parcels have to be 60 feet of frontage on a right-of-way, whether it be public or private. So they will meet that criteria, which is really the only thing that's under consideration.
Do they have a drop dead date for breaking ground?
I do not know. They haven't even turned in their plans yet. There's been a conceptual site plan for the restaurant.
Where's the restaurant?
Well, not deliberately to say yet, I don't think, but...
Correct.
It's one you've heard of before, but I'll leave it at that.
Of course, it's being recorded, you know.
Did you say Gary Green?
Well, maybe it is. It's a Gary Green.
Okay, and of course, this will be similar to the Drury and everything in that they will not have direct access off of Frontal Road, no curb cuts and anything like that. It'll all be off of the back side of the property, off of this road.
Right. This road will be a functional, basically a reverse frontage road along Inter-Perimeter, privately owned, privately maintained, unseamed. All these parcels will have an inter-Perimeter road address. It's very similar to the Drury situation, except the property is actually less complicated than Drury's.
You'll have a backyard front of your road?
Correct. The frontage road that's along the road will be running down the old property, which is actually how it was built originally, just to build the driveway in. But now we're having to design and develop a rampage.
Okay.
To lock it down.
Any other questions or discussion from the board or with Matt and the staff? Is anyone here for this? And if so, would you like to forgive, give us any additional information or...
My name is Clayton Milligan. I'm with Level Engineering at 3998, enter Frontal Drive. I'm here representing Gray Murray. He's still winning Auburn's loss this weekend. Couldn't be here today if he doesn't help out. I think Matt covered it pretty well. The only thing I might add, I think when Gray started developing his property, it was under, before the new, our current LDR was in place. So some of the original master planning, and I believe when Woodnickel was put in, was prior to you to LDR. So some of the stuff that wouldn't have worked in old code is now we're trying to make it all fit back together. The main reason for us having to do a private right-of-way instead of just an easement is he's wanting to subdivide the parcels. If you look at your, the plaque here tracks four or five, four or five mainly, those couldn't be subdivided out without frontage on a private or public road. So this is just kind of allowing flexibility for him to be able to subdivide those out as separate parcels as this whole piece case develops.
Now, track four will have enough access?
They'll have to keep at least 60 feet of frontage on that road, and that's about what they're showing there.
Right, that was, we arrived at that around that corner at 60 foot.
And those are not proposed to be subdivided yet. They're not actual lots. It's coming forward, but actually they sell together as one piece.
Right.
And one or five may become two pieces depending upon which purchaser comes along.
Right, but if four ended up as a standalone by itself lot, it would still be criteria for frontage inside and all that stuff?
It would.
Okay.
The kicker is this right here. That's about 60 feet.
Right. So it's smaller.
Correct. Dr. Howden, variance?
And I would speak too, as far as utilities. Every lot is currently has access to water or sewer. So there won't need to be any more sewer extensions. Water services would have to be, one water service would have to be bored for track five underneath the private road. But other than that, everyone else has water sewer access as their own standard.
Eventually, when it's all developed, wouldn't you dedicate the road back to the city?
Gray would prefer to keep it in a homeowners, in a homeowners, a property owners association where they have control over... Because what's also going to be in there, there's a regional detention pond on the back that doesn't show, it's cut off here.
I think it's on the one in your packet, the front of the Blackwater Drive.
Yeah, it's on the back side.
That's a shared detention pond for all of us.
And Gray had pretty tight agreements that he signed with the people that buy his property, the Publix Development, the Murphy Oil, the bank across the street, Farmers Emergence, Heritage Bank, but all the lighting. He has pretty tight architectural controls. He's trying to keep it looking nice. So his intent is to keep all of that as, within the property owners association.
I have a question for Matt. On a private road, so whatever landscaping designs that the city has, they are not, they don't have to do that on a private road?
They do.
They do?
It's actually one of the preferences of this being a private right-of-way instead of simply an access easement. One of the landscape requirements is you have a street yard along the street frontage, and that doesn't matter if it's public or private, it's still a trigger.
So they still have to follow?
So they will have to landscape along this private road the same as if it's a private road.
So making it a private, a private right-of-way, private road actually will increase the landscape requirements on the frontage on the other side of this as opposed to if it is dead?
And that's one of the considerations we use while we're looking at when we were doing Drury's proposal, because they were facing the same question. And the advantages of having a reduced right-of-way width that actually allows more room outside that boundary line, which is now private property, as part of the restaurants and the retail stores, it actually has a little more room for the landscape without the approaching on their perky. So if all the pieces fit there, just a little more easement.
Any other questions, any other discussion? Thank you, sir. I'm assuming no one else is here for opposition, whatever?
We had no contact in our office regarding this case.
Okay. Okay, you've heard. Any questions, any discussions? Did I entertain a motion?
I saw over this, variance may approve, signing both conditions that were noted in this plan.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Howden, second from Ms. Gastons to accept as presented with the conditions noted in staff, numbers one and two. Please make that a part of the minutes. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck with it, please make it look good for the city and all the tenants. Okay, and that concludes the business part of our active hearings. I would like to welcome Ms. Flyler. She is the new member that will be taking over for Scott Orinstein, I assume, in January.
Sure.
Welcome to the board. Or it might be condolences.
And I'm glad you're all here, that way she gets to meet each other. At the time, she had not been to one of these, and we thought it was a good idea that she come sit in on one, or at least sitting up there.
Well, this one was a tiny one. Okay, thank you. I have minutes. Anybody got any changes? Did I get a motion to accept as presented?
Someone.
I have motion, Ms. Quarterman. Do I have a second? Ms. Hobbie. All in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. Any thing, I know we've got election of chair and vice chair that were appointed last month. All in favor of accepting this laid as presented, please raise a hand. All opposed?
Oh!
Oh, no. Hold on, I wondered what that... I was trying to translate something from English, from Spanish to English, I was like... Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Can I change my vote to unanimous?
Unanimous, with two gang members, myself and Brett, being the, we're the ones who are being voted on. Okay, any other... Okay, any other, new business, old business, anything we can talk about from staff standpoint?
Already adopted the schedule for 2015. Only other thing to talk about is if you want to do celebratory things for the holidays, which we have done sometimes in the past.
I think we should go to Nancy's house.
Oh, we danced, we had a good time. We had a good time, we really did.
I think we could put her on the hot seat.
I'll think of that.
Let's go to Woodnickel, then. Do a next man.
We had a good time, sure did.
Well, if something is put together, we will notify everybody or ask their opinions of it, and before we do anything. Okay, if there's no other business, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for your attention and attendance, ladies and gentlemen.